I will now call to order the meeting of the Victivol City Council in the same council sitting as the Victivol Library Board of Trustees, the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the redevelopment agency, the city as a housing asset successor, Joint Powers Finance Authority, and the Victivol Water District. Madam Clerk, will you kindly call the roll? [S02] Councilmember Godan? [S03] Here.
Councilmember Irving? [S04] Here. Mayor Protam Harriman? [S05] Here. Mayor Becerra? [S06] Here. We have quorum. [S01] Thank you. And this time we'll move on to public comment.
Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak? [S02] No, Madam Mayor. At this time, I'll turn it over to the city attorney, Mr. Dubrnowski.
Thank you, Mayor Becerra. We have one item this evening, which is conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code 54956.8. The real property listed is at the airport. The actual properties are listed on the agenda, as are the negotiating parties. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the regular six o'clock session.
Okey dokey. Thank you very much. Time is 5:01, and we are now in closed session. Open session will resume at 6:00 p.m.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Today is Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, and the time is 6:00 p.m. I will call to order the regular meeting of the following will come to order. The Victorville City Council, and the same council sitting as the Victorville Library Board of Trustees, the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the redevelopment agency, the city has a housing assets assessor, joint powers finance authority in the Victorville Water District. Madam Clerk, will you kindly call the roll?
Councilmember Godam?
Here.
Councilmember Irving?
Present.
Mayor Protem Harriman?
Here.
Mayor Becerra?
Here.
We have Quorum.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. D. Bernowski.
Thank you, Mayor Becerra. We had closed session this evening. It was real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8 pertaining to properties out of the airport. The actual properties and the negotiating parties are fully set forth on the agenda. At this time, there's no reportable action with respect to that item.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to the dedication, which will be led by Pastor Jose Flores with the Gate Church, and our pledge will be led by Captain Jerry Davenport.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to come and serve your city. We ask you, Lord, please pray for our leaders. This is huge responsibility that they have wisdom bestowed upon them, integrity to lead our city. We love our city, Lord, and we just thank you so much for your sovereignty and your goodness. Heavenly Father, we put all our trust in you, and all of God, people say amen. Thank you.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're going to do special presentation, presentation of new hires and promotions to the city council. I will now turn it over to the city manager, Mr. Metzler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. On a quarterly basis, we've actually come before you to celebrate a couple of major milestones in the careers of our employees here with the city of Victorville, and those milestones that we're celebrating tonight are the milestone of first being hired and then, of course, being promoted, and they're milestones that are hugely important to us as, as a team here, and so we wanted to be able to recognize them as a city, but also use this as an opportunity to introduce them to you as well. So we do have our Assistant Director of Human Resources, Ms. Sandra Bostic, here to lead the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Metzler, and good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Tonight, I have the privilege of recognizing our new hires and promotions for the months of July, August, and September. So I'll start by announcing each new team member and invite them to come up and stand in front of the dais, and we will be presenting them with a pin. At the end of the presentation of new hires, we invite our council members to join them for a photo, so we'll go ahead and get started. First is Bradley East, survey technician in our engineering department. Jacqueline Stewart, Assistant City Librarian in Community Services. Shaquille Norze, Assistant Engineer One in our Engineering Department. Abdul Abdallah, Network Engineer in Information Technology. Trina Mathewson, Management Technician in our City Manager Department. Kelsey White-Funkhauser, Administrative Secretary in our Community Services Department. Gladys Pautzma, Lead Account Clerk in Finance. And Jasmine Flurry, Code Compliance Technician in our Code Compliance Department. If our council members will join us for a photo. Now we'll recognize our promoted employees. You all can take your seats. And we'll start out with Brandon Thompson, Promoted to Library Associate in Community Services. Please join us in the front. Evelyn Sanchez, Library Associate in Community Services. Kimberly Major, Promoted to Payroll Specialist in our Finance Department. Vanessa Trevino, Promoted to Permit Technician in Building. And Rebecca Blankenship, Promoted to Permit Technician in our Building Department. Okay, we're getting ready for a photo now.
Shaquille Norze, Assistant Engineer One in our Engineering Department. Abdul Abdallah, Network Engineer in Information Technology. Trina Mathewson, Management Technician in our City Manager Department. Kelsey White Funkhauser, Administrative Secretary in our Community Services Department. Gladys Pautzma, Lead Account Clerk in Finance. And Jasmine Flurry, Code Compliance Technician in our Code Compliance Department. If our council members will join us for a photo. Now we'll recognize our promoted employees. You all can take your seats. And we'll start out with Brandon Thompson, Promoted to Library Associate in Community Services. Please join us in front. Evelyn Sanchez, Library Associate in Community Services. Kimberly Major, Promoted to Payroll Specialist in our Finance Department. Vanessa Trevino, Promoted to Permit Technician in Building. And Rebecca Blankenship, Promoted to Permit Technician in our Building Department. Okay, we're getting ready for a photo now. That concludes our presentation of new hires and promotions.
Thank you very much. At this time, we are now going to turn it over to the city clerk swearing in of engineer -- not said, sorry. Go ahead.
Shara Avazi and Kevin Cravens. So if I could please have Chief Klimmer come forward along with engineer Kevin Cravens, Kristen Avazi, and engineer Shara Avazi. Good evening, gentlemen. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you, gentlemen. Chief Klimmer, will you please pin engineer Kevin Craven, please? And now can we have Kristen Avazi? Please pin Shara Avazi. Thank you, and congratulations.
At this time, Madam Clerk, will you present the agenda and any revisions thereto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are no revisions to the agenda this evening.
Thank you. At this time, my council members, any conflict of interest? We'll move on. Introduction of public comments. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Victorville City Council. Your city council is interested in your ideas and opinions and furthermore endeavors to incorporate them into its deliberations. At the same time, the council must be able to carry out its business in an organized and efficient manner, free from material disruption. Therefore, this meeting will be administered in accordance with the council's established policies and procedures in Government Code Section 54957.9 and 54957.95. Individuals may speak on agenda items or on issues not posted on the agenda during the public comment section, provided those issues are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Individuals, speakers, may address the council once per public comment period and once per each public hearing item for up to three minutes. Additional time may be allotted for appeal hearings in accordance with the city's adopted policy and procedure manual. Those who desire to comment on the public hearing item may wish to reserve their remarks until that particular public hearing has been opened. All testimonies to be directed solely to the council, although open meeting laws do not permit council members to engage in dialogue with any speaker during the public comment period, please know your comments and questions may be taken into consideration by council members when discussing the particular agenda item. The presiding officer may briefly respond or have staff respond to statements or questions or may request that staff report back to the council at a subsequent meeting. Speakers are requested to comment as briefly as the subject permits. Once comments are invited, the speaker will be called on by name and recognized by the presiding officer. The speaker will state the item number that will be addressed or that the subject is a non-agendized matter. Audience members may not disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of this meeting, and those who do are subject to removal from the meeting pursuant to Penal Code 403. Your understanding and cooperation are appreciated. Our first speaker this evening is born again on a non-agendized item.
Hello, please let me know when I can begin.
Your time is running.
Thank you. Fuck you. These are not my words to this body, but rather, these are the words that my sheriff, Shannon Dykes, and some of his deputies say to me on more than one occasion. And they don't say it in word necessarily, but they say it in act and indeed. Every time a San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department violates one of my constitutional rights, he says fuck you to me and to the Constitution of the United States. This morning, in the city of Victorville, I was legally, lawfully, and peacefully recording a traffic stop according to my constitutional right to do so, and a San Bernardino County sheriff deputy said fuck you to me, to the Constitution, and to our legislature, who enacted Penal Code 148 subsection G. It says, as long as I am in a place where I am lawfully allowed to be, I have a right to record law enforcement in the performance of their duties. And the fact that I am recording is not a reason to establish probable cause to detain me or reasonable suspicion, rather, to detain me or probable cause to arrest me. Yet, a San Bernardino County sheriff deputy, through threats and intimidation, gave me an arbitrary order to stand back behind his police car. This deputy was not even the deputy who initiated a traffic stop. The deputy who initiated the traffic stop was doing his job, uninterrupted with, unmolested. He was riding the traffic ticket. This was a secondary deputy who arrived at the scene. This is yet another example of the lawlessness and the disrespect shown to me and my fellow patriotic Americans for exercising our constitutional rights. I've been falsely arrested by this department for interfering and obstructing. Deputy Mora from the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department lied. He lied in his report, and he lied under oath in a court of law in the United States of America when he said that the reason that he arrested me was because there were fired shell casings on the ground where I was standing. That was a complete fabricated lie. The video proves that it was a lie. The circumstances demonstrate that it was a lie. There was another member of the --
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is E.T. Snell on a non-agendized item.
E.T. Snell, www.ETSnell.com. Nobody appreciates First Amendment more than me and that guy that just spoke. Wow. I want to congratulate him for having the balls to stand up and say what he felt. You know, I'm here tonight to talk again about Tiffany Goddard and how she got in and filed her paperwork. Now, I was a propagator of the Gray Davis recall. I don't think there's anybody walking this planet that's filed more recall petitions than me. And, uh, you people have a choice. Because the way that I see it, there's a, when it comes to her election, it's called kleptocracy, C-L-E-P-T-R-O-C-A-C-Y. And that means that it's, uh, that it's being ruled by a bunch of gangsters. And when you allowed her to do the, her paperwork the way she did and to file that bogus paperwork, and then she said she lived somewhere where the lady gave her up in a heartbeat, you know, that, that's not what we want. And we just got a Muslim communist elected in New York. That broke my heart. I didn't think they would, they were that stupid in New York, but I guess they are. So, you know, uh, but, uh, I, uh, I'd like to call it FBI investigation, also an outside investigation to look at her paperwork. Because you just can't come in from Apple Valley, you're working at your house in Apple Valley with your husband, and then come over here and run. I mean, that's disrespect to everybody here. You know, also, last time I spoke to city clerk, which you kind of, I was done speaking, but I had something to say, one more word, and she jumped in. It's not, it wasn't, my understanding, there's not the city clerk's job.
Mr. Snell, you'll keep your comments to the city council, not to our employees.
Well, it's not the city clerk's job to interrupt me.
It was me. You will keep your comments to us, not to our employees.
Yeah. So, so, you know, there's that kleptocracy again, you know, and, uh, we need to have you guys vote her off. You guys are smart, you're intelligent, you know what's right, you know what's wrong. And how she got here was just because Deborah Jones was her buddy, so she put her in. And to use her church also, I thought it was horrible, because you can't take a church and get involved in politics, because they lose, they can lose their, their, uh, their, their nonprofit. You know, the guy who spoke last week, the meeting, talking about his water meter, and he was being charged. And he wasn't using any water. I mean, that's complete kleptocracy. And, uh, you know, how, how, how Victorville got the airport from Adelanto, I've always questioned that deal. And there's a bunch of other things that I've questioned, too, in the political --
Your time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Mayor?
There are no additional speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we will move on to our public hearings. Our first business boarder is item one, an amendment to the Victorville Municipal Code with an environmental exception making various changes to Chapter Five of Title 16 of the Victorville Municipal Code to adopt State of California mandated 2025 Title 24 Code of Regulations. Mr. Metzler, would you kindly introduce this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Every three years, the State of California adopts new building standards that it ultimately expects cities like ours, along with counties throughout the California, to adopt at the local level to ensure a conformance with the new state-adopted code. And so we, we traditionally do that through the ordinance process where we amend our municipal code. And so this item is, is doing just that. It's adopting the, the California State 2025 Uniform Building Code, basically incorporating that as ours. It also does include some additional administrative elements as well. But effectively, this is an item that is necessary for us to approve before the beginning of the, the fiscal year, because it's the state that expects that come, time come January 1st, 2026, that these new codes go into effect for all new construction. And so with that, the author on this item is your building official, Mr. Joe Sluggers, and he's available for any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, would you please read the recommendation?
That the Honorable City Council open and conduct a public hearing to receive public testimony, close the public hearing, find the municipal code amendment exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B3, introduce ordinance number 2548 for adoption and first reading by title only, and waive further reading in full of proposed ordinance number 2458.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we'll do technical questions from council members. Councilwoman Goddham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have a quick question. On page 10, in the fourth paragraph, it says, "Ordnance 2458 removes the VMC exemption for issuing certificates of occupancy for private residential dwellings to establish a uniform requirement for all structures." Can you just clarify that for me?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Yes, I think the best one to do that is your building official, Joe Sluggers.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Previously, we had an exemption in the code for R3, which is an occupancy type that's specific to single and two-family dwellings, not requiring a certificate of occupancy. What we found over the years is that we were a little bit out of alignment with other cities who have made the move to issuing CFOs for that occupancy. And we've had a number of members of the real estate community specifically ask for that as proof to their lending agencies and other, other parties that essentially construction is done and meets all codes. So we wanted to make that move, so we're basically not operating on an island. We're doing business similarly.
Is there a cost for that?
Not at this time. We're going to issue it as part of the final inspection of the home.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you. Councilwoman Irving?
Yes, um, just a point of clarification. We're simply aligning our building standards codes with the estate, correct?
That's correct. These are actually mandated to be adopted statewide. I, I, but I would be remiss by not saying that there are parts of this that are discretionary. The adoption of the appendices, for instance, and some of the administrative provisions that Mr. Metzler alluded to, those are elective. Those can be changed. The appendices are not required to be adopted, but the vast majority of what you see before you has to be adopted before the beginning of the year.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mayor Protem Harriman?
I've already had my questions answered. Thank you.
And I just have one, if I may, Mr. Metzler. Mr. Sluggers, when do all these changes, and we're going to have a couple of them, when do they take effect?
January 1st of this upcoming year.
But if my house is already in the queue, it doesn't affect it then? It's everything new coming in, correct?
Correct. And we actually put out advisories to that effect to developers, letting them know if they make application before the end of the year, then they're grandfathered in under current applicable codes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have no further questions. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, is there any request to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
I will close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, will you please read the title, ordinance number 2458?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville approving case PLA N25-00015, an amendment to Chapter Five, Building and Fire Regulations of Title 16 of the Victorville Municipal Code with an environmental exemption and adopting State of California mandated 2025 Title 24 Building Codes.
Thank you. I'll invite a motion for this item.
Move to adopt staff recommendation as to points three through five as presented on the agenda.
Second.
Leave it first by Councilwoman Goddham, and second by Councilwoman Irving. Councilwoman Goddham, comment on the pending motion?
I have none, thank you.
Councilwoman Irving, count --
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Harriman?
I have none.
And I have none. Madam Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilmember Goddham?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We've now taken action to approve points three through five of staff's recommendation as presented on the agenda. Item two, an amendment to the Victorville Municipal Code with an environmental exception making various changes to Title 16, including but not limited to new and updated land use allowances and standards related to state-mandated housing types and an update to ministerial tentative maps approval. Mr. Metzler, would you kindly introduce this item?
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This is an item that was actually presented to and voted unanimously. This is an item that was actually presented to and voted unanimously in favor of on October 8th by your planning commission. And this item is dealing more so specifically with incorporating as a part of our code regulations adopted at the state level. As you know, the state is annually adopting, approving bills that are effectively aimed at trying to increase the supply of housing throughout California. And so, in, in the state's adoption of some of those bills, we may, and in this case, we do have to make changes to our code. And so, this item is, is being brought forward to speak to concepts such as urban dwelling units and urban subdivisions and, and are making changes to our code so that it is effectively in conformance with state law, state law. And so, with that, the author on this item is your city planner, Mr. Alex Haddiggy, and he's available for any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, would you please read the recommendation?
That the Honorable City Council open and conduct a public hearing to receive public testimony, close the public hearing, find the Victorville Municipal Code amendment categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA per SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B3, introduce ordinance number 25, sorry, 2461 for adoption and first reading by title only to amend the Victorville Municipal Code and waive a further reading in full of proposed ordinance number 2461.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we'll do technical questions from council members. Councilmember Irving?
I don't have any, thank you.
Councilwoman Godean?
I just had a quick question. Could someone clarify for me the difference between the small lot subdivision and the urban lot split?
Uh, Mr. Haddiggy, would you answer those questions, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Godean. Uh, yes, an urban lot split is essentially taking a single lot and dividing it into two lots. An urban subdivision, depending on the zoning, effectively would allow for a single lot within a multifamily zone to be divided into up to 10 lots.
Okay. And is there like a minimum size that they can make it?
Yes, with regards to an urban lot split, the, the minimum by state law is 1,200 square feet. But beyond that, the first test there is that it's 40% of the size of the existing lots. Or typical lot sizes in R1 zones are 7,200 square feet. So, 40% of that is the, the initial method. If a lot is smaller than 7,200 square feet, they are allowed to go down to 1,200 square feet for the urban lot split.
Okay. And one of the things that I'm wondering if it changed, so, we used, used to be approved by the zoning, or was, was it the planning commission, and now it's the zoning administrator? Is that how that's being changed?
Correct. Parcel maps is how we've historically subdivided land, and that by municipal code is a requirement to be approved by the planning commission. And then it goes forward through the filing into the final map. With this required state amendment, urban lot splits are required to be done at the administrative level, as are small lot subdivisions. So, it's limited circumstances where it's applicable. It's only applicable to these housing-related projects that meet the, the requirements of the code. And it is a state requirement that we're required to implement. Now, this is just codifying it to clarify for, for implementation purposes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that for me, Mr. Haddiggy. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
Yeah, I, I understand all this, but just in case maybe some of the others don't. So, you can split your lot, subdivide it to two lots, and you're, you can have two units on each lot. So, an existing residential lot, if, if it complies with the size needed and all the other setbacks, can essentially be changed to four units.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Harriman. That is correct. And for the urban lot split portion of the proposal, in accordance with state law, it could be divided into two lots, and each lot could have two units. Any combination of two single-family homes, it could be a single-family home and an ADU, or a single-family home and a JADU. Additionally, under SB9, even if you don't subdivide the lots, on a single lot, under the allowances for urban dwelling units, you are permitted to put a second home on a single lot, and each one of those homes is allowed to have an ADU or an accessory dwelling unit. So, the, the, the test of four is, is kind of the, the overall goal of SB9, that four units on any lot, whether it be the result of an urban lot split or a lot that stands alone.
The State of California is starting to make a mess out of things. The, uh, they would still have to pay for, to subdivide the, the existing lot.
That is correct. There'll be subdivision fees for the administrative approval for what the cost is to staff, for the entitlement, but it will be an administrative level approval.
And we're just bringing everything to state mandate?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Metzler, if I may ask? Alex, knowing my math and everything, you're telling me a room this size could turn into two houses and two ADUs? Because if you figure, it's probably a 30-foot by 32 to 36?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Potentially, yes, under the provisions of state law.
But you said urban use can cut it down to that much. What did, what defines urban use here in the City of Victorville?
Uh, any R1-zone property. So, for an urban lot split, that's any R1-zone property.
So, if I live in a housing tract, my neighbor could build a second house behind their house, right behind it?
That is correct.
Wow, okay, thank, go ahead.
If I might just offer some clarification, I, I do believe there's still some standards that have to be satisfied. I mean, certain distances from the property line and things like that, so...
Correct, correct. Thank you, Mr. Metzler. There are, are setbacks. Generally, they're four feet from rear inside property lines. This is the same standard that is for ADUs. I know they are standards that we're not used to seeing in the city. What I can add for, for context here is SB9's been effective since 2021, and at this time, we haven't seen any urban lot split proposals, and we've seen no second dwellings. We've seen one proposal for a second dwelling in a half-acre lot, but ultimately, that project determined that the ADU route, the accessory dwelling unit route, was more feasible to them, largely because there is a difference in development impact fees for an accessory dwelling unit versus a second, second home. Second homes are required to pay complete development impact fees.
All right, thank you, sir. At this time, I will open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, is there any request to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I'll now close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of ordinance number 2461?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville approving amendment case PLA in 25-00013, an amendment to the Victorville Municipal Code with an environmental exemption to make various changes to Title 16, including but not limited to new and updated land use allowances and standards related to the state mandated housing types and an update to the ministerial tentative map approval citywide.
Thank you. I'll invite a motion for this item?
I'll move to adopt staff recommendation as to points three, four, and five.
Second?
I have a first by Mayor Potem Harriman, a second by Councilwoman Godean. Mayor Potem Harriman, comments on the pending motion?
I have none.
Councilwoman Godean?
I have none.
Uh, Councilwoman Irving?
No.
And I have none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Godean?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We've now taken action to approve points three through five of staff's recommendation as presented on the agenda. Item three, an amendment to the Victorville Municipal Code with an environmental exemption to adopt amendments of, to Chapter Seven of Title 16 of the Victorville Municipal Code relating to business license processes, including the introduction of live scan procedures and other minor administrative updates. Mr. Metzler, would you kindly introduce this item?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This, this item does bring current, uh, certain provisions in the Development Code, particularly Chapter Seven. And as you articulated in, in the, um, in the subject or in the summary, it does deal with, um, internalizing the business license process and involving some lives, live scan procedures here within our operation. We certainly believe that these are being brought forward to help streamline some of the process for those types of uses that require, um, a live scan background. And so, with that, the author on this item is Mr. Joe Sluggers, your building official, and he's available for any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please read the recommendation?
That the Honorable City Council open and conduct a public hearing, close the public hearing, find the municipal code amendment exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B3, introduce ordinance number 2459 for adoption and first reading by title only, and waive further reading in full of proposed ordinance number 2459.
Thank you. At this time, we'll do technical questions from council members. Councilwoman Godean?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a quick question. Um, so, does this move our live scan service from the Sheriff's Department to the City Hall?
Uh, no, we're not replacing, uh, the live scan that's at the PD. If you want to elect to, to, to go to the PD and still do it there, you can. This would be supplementing the live scan to where we actually host a service here at City Hall as well.
And that service is open to the public?
Correct.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilwoman Irving?
Yes, I do have a question. So, we're bringing live scan fingerprinting in-house, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, that, I'm, I'm happy to hear that. Since we're going to be primarily responsible for this function, is there an instance, just asking, where we might offer, um, like a waiver? Are there certain circumstances where we might entertain that?
Uh, let me have, um, your building official, Mr. Sluggers, answer that question. And he can probably answer that question, speaking to the cases, of course, where it would be required.
Yes.
So, just to be clear, this is not necessarily required for all license types. Our municipal code is, is very clear about the license types that it does require it for. Uh, there are not waivers for those license types, but it is only required in the case of, the main reason we did it ultimately is sidewalk vendors. They do require live scan to be performed. So, because we knew that there would be an increase in the number that we'd be processing, that's why we went through this. But there's also like a ice cream truck operator, non-emergency medical transport, for obvious reasons, they're operating vehicles. Those license types do specifically require the live scan, and it will have to be done in all cases of those licenses.
So, the requirement is tethered to business licensing, and therefore, the answer is no.
There are no exceptions.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
Yeah, so, the ice cream man can bring their ice cream truck to City Hall and have it looked at, uh, rather than go somewhere and look at his ice cream truck somewhere else.
This is only specific to background check ultimately. So, uh, like in the case of an ice cream truck, they'll still be subject to the requirements of other departments, potentially like Health Department. So, those are clearances that we require separately. But regarding, uh, the live scan procedure to check their background, we can do that in-house now, not only to collect the fingerprints, but to review the results when they come in.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Metzler, if I may? Um, Mr. Slager, if we have a person that comes in, and this person is not supposed to be around children, let's say, and they're applying for an ice cream truck, what happens to the results when they come in? Or what happens with those types of things? Do they tell us a big nay, or do they come in and say, "He hasn't checked in. We've been looking for him"? What happens?
So, they will come back and show the, the violations that this person is guilty of, and then based on those findings, we can then deny the license. In the case that you described, we absolutely would.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I have no further questions. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, is there any request to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
I will now close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title, ordinance number 2459?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville approving case PLA in 25-00016, an amendment to Chapter Seven, Business License of Title 16 of the Victorville Municipal Code with an environmental exemption and adopting various changes to the city's business license processes, including the introduction of live scan procedures and other minor administrative updates.
Thank you very much. I'll invite a motion for this item?
Move to adopt staff recommendation as to points three, four, and five as presented on the agenda.
Second.
I have a first by Councilwoman Godean, a second by Councilwoman Irving. Councilwoman Godean, any comments on the pending motion?
None, thank you.
Councilwoman Irving?
No comments, thank you.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
I have none.
And I have none. Madam Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilmember Godean?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We've now taken action to approve points three through five of staff's recommendation as presented on the agenda. Item four, an amendment to the Victorville Municipal Code with an environmental exemption repealing and amending various chapters and sections of Title VIII Fire of the Victorville Municipal Code to adopt the 2025 edition of the California Fire Code as amended by the State of California. Whoever has their phone on, can you please turn it down? Thank you. Mr. Metzler, would you kindly introduce this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This item is similar in nature to the first public hearing item you took in that this item, um, is effectively, um, updating our code to adopt a fire code that's consistent with the, the state fire code, basically allowing for the change from the currently recognized 2022 edition of the California Fire Code and adopting the 2025 California Fire Code. And so, with that, this brings our municipal code in line with state law. This item has been prepared by your Deputy Fire Marshal, Jeremy Kosick, and submitted by your, uh, building official, Mr. Joe Sluggers. They're both available for any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the recommendation?
That the Honorable City Council open and conduct a public hearing, close the public hearing, find the adoption of ordinance number 2460 exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B3, introduce ordinance number 2460 for first reading by title only, waive further reading in full of proposed ordinance number 2460, and set the second public hearing for December 2, 2025 to consider adoption and passage of ordinance 2460, and direct the city clerk to publish notice in accordance with Government Code, Section 50022.3.
At this time, we'll do tactical questions from council members regarding this item. Councilwoman Irving?
No questions.
Councilwoman Godean?
I have none.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
I have none.
And I have none. I'll open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, is there any request to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
I'll now close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title, ordinance 2460?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville repealing and amending various chapters and sections of Title VIII Fire of the Victorville Municipal Code with an environmental exemption for the purpose of, one, adopting by reference the 2025 edition of the California Fire Code, California Code of Regulations, Title 24, Part 9, including appendices B, BB, C, CC, D, and H thereof, and other local amendments, and, two, reflecting certain fire department operational changes.
Thank you. I will invite a motion for this item?
Move to adopt staff recommendation as to points three through six as presented on the agenda.
Second.
I have a first by Councilwoman Godean, a second by Mayor Potem Harriman. Councilwoman Godean, any comments on the pending motion?
I have none, thank you.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
I have none.
No.
Thank you. And I have none. Madam Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Godean?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We've now taken action to approve staff's recommendation, points three through six of staff's recommendation as presented on the agenda. Go through that. Now, we'll move on to the consent calendar, items five through 17. At this time, I just wanted to, for those of you who read it, item nine was a Measure P biannual report. I hope all, everybody had a chance to read it, and I've been told, Mr. Metzler, it's going to be posted on our website. For everyone listening, please read it. It's a very good read of our Measure P money. So, now we'll, I'll invite a motion for the consent calendar, items five through 17.
Move to adopt the consent calendar.
Second?
I have a first by Councilwoman Irving, a second by Mayor, uh, Councilwoman Godean. Ma- Madam Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilmember Godean?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We've now taken action, items five through 17, in accordance with recommendation as set forth on the agenda. Rent Communication, item 18, Amendment Four to the Consult Professional Service Provider Agreement, LPA Inc., for the design of the new police station and Civic Plaza. Mr. Metzler, would you kindly introduce this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This item effectively amends a contract that we currently have- that's actually uh helped us get through um the site evaluation phase, um, the the conceptual design phase, ultimately to this point where, based upon what you'll see in a presentation in in a short minute, um, a conceptual design where this contract would ultimately take you to complete design drawings where you'd be in a position ultimately to bid out for the construction, uh, the construction of a new police department along with uh the Civic Plaza. And of course, these projects or this project collectively has been before you uh for input and feedback, along with including uh some time ago, uh, input and feedback uh from the community. And so with that, we do have a brief presentation from Jeremy Hart uh from LPA, who's been the lead uh on the project. He can walk you through where we're at uh with the project, what it all entails, um, and then answer any questions you might have.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here uh before you once again and present the progress on the um design for the new police station and city park. So we thought we would start with a project update. To remind everybody, uh, we were here before you back in uh twenty twenty-three in a joint session with the Planning Commission and the City Council to talk about where we should actually put um the the police station and the city park. Um, we looked at a lot of different options, and ultimately, the result of that meeting was we perhaps don't have the right site, and we need to go find a right site. So we spent uh twenty twenty-four finding the right site. Um, the city acquired the site. We began our due diligence investigations on the site. And by the end, uh, roughly November of twenty twenty-four, we had started that SEQA process to understand all the environmental impacts that it would take to develop that site. In uh January of twenty twenty-five, we started conceptual design of the project. Um, that really informed us the form, the shape, the size, the program of not only the um police station, but also the city park and how they would fit on this new site. As we started moving through conceptual design, we came back to the City Council in May of uh tw- this year, and we gave a conceptual design update that included a budget, um, a conceptual design. And you approved us to move into the schematic design phase. And so if we think of uh the development of the documentation of your project as a hundred percent schematic design, the end of schematic design where we ended up in October represents about fifteen percent complete. So this next phase that we're asking you your permission to move into is to take it all the way to a hundred percent. That includes getting a building permit, um, and uh taking it out to bid. So we actually have contractors telling us what it's gonna cost to bid. Um, so that's where we are today. We completed schematic design phase uh on October eighth. I touched briefly on the SEQA process, but I think it's important for you to understand um where we stand in that SEQA process today. So like I said, that began in November of twenty-four. We've been moving through the uh technical analysis and environmental documentation. Um, but SEQA isn't complete. As you're probably well aware, this is a process that takes a lot of time. We have to complete the technical analysis and move through um the process, get public comment, and then you have to approve the SEQA document at a city council meeting. That is tentatively slated to come back to you again in May of next year. But we have, we've developed enough information and content on the project that we have high confidence in what the technical reports are telling us, confident enough that we feel um that it's appropriate to move forward with the design. Um, and so I'm going to invite my associate, Casey Chapin. Um, he's gonna come walk you through an update on the design process.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and esteemed members of council. Thank you. It's my pleasure to give you an update on the progress we've made on the new police department in Civic Park for Victorville. Uh, starting with the overall site, uh, of course, the site that we're looking at is at the corner of Civic Drive and Seneca Road. So just catty corner from the building that we're all standing in currently. Um, and overall, the the site really has a number of really fantastic amenities for the community. We'll start at the south end of the site along Seneca Road. Uh, that's where the Civic Park will be located. So the Civic Park has a number of recreational amenities that are really for folks uh in Victorville to utilize throughout the year. And we'll kind of zoom in on that, and I can break down some of those specific program elements. But the park is really kind of owning that corner of the space and really making a strong connection between the development on this site and the development where we're standing and across the street in City Hall. Uh, to the north of that, there's public parking for uh the the park itself. And then we have the Police Department Building, which is a forty-four thousand square foot facility, state-of-the-art uh for the police, um, the Sheriff's Department in Victorville. And then uh in and around that, from the on the north and the east, is the secure parking area for the Police Department. So we have two entry points, uh, one off of Civic Drive and one off of Seneca for both the the park uh patrons and as well as the uh the Police Department to use. So starting with the park, uh, there's a number of amenities that um were part of the programming process from the very inception of this. And it was really about identifying needs in the community um and making sure that those are addressed adequately in the. Is that better? How about now? Sorry, is the microphone working?
Mic check, mic check.
Okay. I'll try and lean a little bit closer. Apologies. So the amenities that the park will provide include a shade pavilion. Obviously, shade is very important in the summer months, um, being in the desert climate that you all uh live and work in. A splash pad, which again is a really fantastic amenity for the community and important for um uh parents and families to cool down in the summer months. Um, we really want to include some elements that uh celebrate the city of Victorville. So there'll be a large uh sign uh at the corner of Seneca and Civic Road, Civic Drive, rather. Um, there's a walking loop for fitness. There's also an amphitheater, which uh will be able to host some of the events that you have year-round, such as the Victorville Sings um competition. Uh, pickleball courts, there'll be four pickleball courts as part of the park. And then we're actually relocating the historic Sheriff's Building that's right outside of these council chambers uh to a very prominent location in the Civic Park and including uh a heritage walk that will outline some significant uh timelines in the history of the community leading up to that uh sheriff's station. So zooming in on the plan of the park, um, we'll start with the the building. For the police station is actually to the north. Uh, just below that is parking for the community that'll serve both the park and the police station visitors. Uh, to the west of that, there's a large public plaza um that both serves to kind of slow down traffic coming off of Civic Drive and uh act as a formal entry plaza for the the community room and the main entry to the police station. Uh, number four is the park amenity building and stage, which flanks number five, which is this large community green that's around thirty thousand square feet. Uh, the playground and the splash pad are just to the north of that, uh, number five on this plan. And then between the green and the playground and splash pad is this heritage walk that I mentioned. So this is uh really a timeline of significant events that have happened in the history of the community leading up to a vista of number eleven on the plan, which is the new location for the historic Sheriff's Building. And then to the east, we have the four pickleball courts, which are number eight on this plan, as well as uh the sign, um, which isn't numbered on this plan, but is right there at the corner of Civic Drive and Seneca with a lawn area behind it, which we see is the the location for the Christmas tree and the lighting ceremony that you have in the wintertime. Looking at the police station building itself, this is a zoning uh diagram, really, showing what facilities are gonna be part of this building um without getting too into the details of the floor plan itself. Um, but we'll start at kind of the upper right corner, uh, which is really dedicated to community and welcoming the public. And this, again, flanks that public plaza off of the park. Uh, there'll be a large uh community meeting space that opens up to that plaza as well as a public lobby and waiting room um that flank the office and administrative spaces of the police station. The community space uh that's sort of anchoring that corner extends beyond a Civic Drive to encompass the briefing room that'll be used for day-to-day police operations and allows for flexibility in terms of opening up that into one larger meeting and gathering space, whether it be for training or for large community events. There's an area for uh for suspects that come into the uh police station, um, as well as a real-time crime center, um, which will be a real important nexus for the technology that's going into the police station. Uh, ample office and administrative space for the folks that live and work there every day, um, as well as some really nice uh recreational amenities. So there'll be um locker room, fitness, both indoor and outdoor. And then on the north side, um, a really uh fantastic break room to help kind of build some camaraderie and community within the department and an outdoor lounge that's accompanying that. So this is the site, basically as it is today. And this is what we envisioned for the new park and police station. So you can see that corner, that signature element, the large uh Victorville sign, um, that's really kind of facing City Hall and really making a strong connection with the rest of the Civic Center and Civic Plaza. Uh, that park amenity just behind that, as well as that community green and the and the pickleball courts beyond. Just above the park, you can see some shade sail canopies. Those are for the playground area and the splash pad. And then further north, of course, the um the police station building itself with its dedicated parking, uh, which will include uh some covered parking with solar canopies for the patrol vehicles, which will help uh offset some of the energy costs and also protect the investment of those patrol vehicles. We zoom into the building, um, the the height of this sort of um area that's really kind of facing the public plaza. Um, we've got this really nice two-story, basically glass volume uh to to be this larger kind of community room space. So that explains why the the form of the building is a little bit larger at this corner. Um, it's about sort of making that connection to the public and having a really strong um visibility to the rest of the community for the Police Department. Uh, in terms of the materials that we're looking at for the architecture, um, we wanted to make a really strong tie to this existing building and to the rest of the Civic Center Plaza because of the proximity to this building that we're standing in today. And the new building, uh, we think it's really important that there be a cohesion between what's happening architecturally. So we looked to pull some cues in terms of materials and colors and finishes from the City Hall building. Uh, so you can see there's um sort of these really nice warm earth tones that sort of dominate um the color palette. Uh, there's some variety in terms of the stone wall that features the sign. Um, there's uh ample use of glass, but it's always shaded uh to protect it from the elements and tasteful use of metal and metal finishes to um give it a little bit of a high-tech futuristic feel. Uh, so for the new building, uh, again, kind of taking some cues from that. Um, this image to the left is not the police station building we're proposing, but a similar-looking building in terms of the material palette uh that actually uses uh concrete masonry block um as sort of the main base wall material. Um, we're looking to do the same on the new police station building for a number of reasons. Uh, one is security and durability, um, and two is to sort of uh play off of that earth tone, that warm feel and the modularity of the existing stone on the City Hall. So this is a view from the ground level of the Civic Plaza, looking north at the community room and the front door of the new police station. Uh, you can see that community room has the potential to really open up uh and become sort of this indoor-outdoor space uh that spills out into the plaza. And above that, there's a large uh screen wall, um, that will have the Victorville logo on it. But if we look at the materials, um, the the base of the building would be that uh concrete masonry block. Uh, it would be used in what we consider kind of an elevated way in that it would be sort of stacked instead of a running bond that you typically see. Um, we would use a color that's a little bit warmer and and connected to the color palette that City Hall has. And then above that, for the roof and for sort of the um the rest of the building, would be uh metal finishes. So we're looking at a standing seam metal for both the roof and some of the wall finishes. And then this element above the community room, uh, this sort of billboard, if you will, as being a perforated metal screen. Uh, this is a view from the splash pad, uh, so again, just a great amenity, especially in the summer months. Um, looking at making it very natural, playing off the uh natural landscape of the desert um and really kind of making sure that there's shade and trees and um seating opportunities so that families can really enjoy this when the the temperature gets a little warm. Uh, just next to that is a playground, and again, um, we're trying to include some elements that are very natural in terms of natural play. Shade, of course, is really important. Um, and then just to the left of this image, you can see that heritage walk that I mentioned earlier. So this is like a large canopy, um, where there could be markers that uh indicate significant events that have happened in the history of Victorville, um, and that could be repeated on the ground plane as well in the concrete. Here's another view of that heritage uh walk. So you can see um in this image, there's sort of the signposts that talk about significant things that have happened in Victorville. The pickleball courts, we all know the pickleball is important in just about every community in California. So uh we have room for four courts here, and we're actually working with the topography of the site, which has a very gentle slope to it. It's not completely flat. But that allows us to actually kind of sink these pickleball courts in that east end of the site, uh, west end of the site, rather, and create a little bit of a natural seating area uh that you can see on the upper side of this image. And then the community green and amphitheater, um, this is just really a great lawn space, a gathering space. Um, you, there's a stage at one end where we've got this large shade canopy. Um, this again could host, you know, movie nights, concerts in the park, Victorville Sings. Uh, there's a lot of potential in terms of the programming and use of this area. And that amenity building is going to include um a ticket booth for any events that you have, restrooms, showers, uh, outdoor showers for the splash pad, um, as well as some storage for the stage and stage functions. And then what's really exciting, I think, to us is the idea that this community room can be a beacon of sorts to the community. Um, the way that we've designed it with this billboard signage element above um is a way to communicate to uh not just Victorville, but anyone really driving up the fifteen uh that there's something special going on that night, that there's an event in this community room. Um, so it will really kind of give that beacon uh out towards the rest of the city and also offer just a a glimpse that um there's some public safety function that's happening here that folks can feel safe and secure, knowing that the police station is um up and running here. So that concludes the design uh update. Um, we wanted also to give you a cost estimate update. And when we were last in front of council um back in March of this year, uh, the budget was around ninety-eight point seven million dollars. That was all in um for both the Police Department Building and for the site um and all the related costs associated with that. We have what we feel is good news to share tonight, which is that those costs have gone down uh with our latest estimate. That's gone down to ninety point five million or uh ninety million five hundred fifty-eight thousand six hundred eighty-nine um based on the most recent estimate in October eighth of this year. That breaks down to um a savings of uh nearly a million dollars just in terms of the Police Department Building itself, which has a lot to do with just the amount of detail and function and um added information that we've been able to um put into the plans and get to our estimators. Um, the site in and around the Police Department has also gone down significantly. Um, the Civic Park has gone up a little bit in terms of the amenities that we're um adding into that space, but that's been offset by some of the earlier um savings at the police station. And then a big savings was in uh projected escalation, and that has a little bit to do with just market uh volatility in March relative to October um from what our estimators are seeing. All that adds up to roughly uh eight point one million dollars in projected savings from uh where we were at during the Phase One presentation. And if we break that down into separating out the Police Department from the park- And if we break that down into separating out the police department from the park itself, the all-in cost of the police department, including the site and parking in and around the police station, is hovering around $72 million right now. And then the park, all in again with its public parking and all of its amenities, is around $18.4. Now, the asterisk here is that these numbers assume that we just continue after tonight with the design process, roll into the next phase of design, and that would mean that the ultimate construction end date would move up significantly. If instead we were to pause for six months until the completion of the SEQA process around the end of May, that would bump the end date of construction out by an additional six months. And so our estimators are seeing an additional $2 million in cost incurred due to that decision. So I think we were looking at ways that we can expedite the project and keep it moving to provide that cost savings. That concludes the design presentation. I'd like to thank you for your time and guess we can answer any questions that you might have.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the recommendation?
That the Honorable City Council adopt Resolution 25-077, amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026, approving an additional appropriation of the Measure P Fund and DIF Recreation Fund for Phase 3 of the Final Design and Construction Administrative Services for the New Police Station and Civic Plaza, and approve Amendment 4 with LPA Inc. to proceed with Phase 3 of the New Police Station and Civic Plaza.
Thank you. At this time, we'll do technical questions from council members. Councilmember Irving?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I certainly want to say thank you for your presentation and the design update, but my questions are really not for you. But it's very, what's proposed is indeed beautiful. My questions are for staff. So we're being asked to approve appropriations for Phase 3, correct? And once Phase 3 is completed, we're in a position to go forward with construction, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So to my knowledge, have we identified funding to move forward?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So we've certainly identified funding to move forward with this contract, and we've planned for that accordingly with the appropriation request here. And you'll actually see that we're appropriating based upon the project. So we're starting to differentiate the police department from the city park, and we're using two funding sources, Measure P being one, and then development impact fees for the Civic Plaza. And we envision going forward that way, where we're having the development impact fee picking up the park component, and ultimately, there's going to have to be a funding plan developed for the police department component. And so that's something that we're expecting to do next, especially over the course of completing the design plans. Next step for us internal is going to be trying to figure out our financing options and what the funding plan is to actually award that construction contract. So before we actually get to that point, excuse me, of actually taking it out for bid, we should expect to have some sense of what is the funding plan for the whole thing.
Is there an anticipated timeframe where we should start or anticipating that conversation as a council?
It's certainly something that I envision us needing to have soon, certainly over the course of the past couple budget presentations we've had, certainly over the last couple of years of presentations regarding other infrastructure needs such as road. You know, we've certainly been sharing with the council the need to consider some other type of funding source for public infrastructure, because we certainly believe first that as we approve Measure P, and Measure P was largely intended for improving services on the public safety and community services. Certainly what wasn't envisioned or programmed directly into Measure P was, say, a $72 million police station. So we do have to figure that out, and I do believe that's a conversation we need to have, very focused on, not just for the police station, but we have a lot of other needs. We have a tremendous amount of stormwater system needs, road repair needs. Certainly, we're believing as the community's growing, there's fire stations, fire station or fire stations needed. Of course, we've gotten into the business of housing animals at our new adoption center that, given the quick reach of the capacity there, we're certainly envisioning additional improvements there, additional building space to increase capacity there. So we've got to, we've got to have a hard conversation about how we're going to pursue funding all of the infrastructure needs going forward.
Sounds like we're going to have the conversation soon. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Godan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My questions kind of go along the same lines. So we're looking at needing about $5.5, $5.5 million to move forward with this step, correct?
That's correct.
And that was money that we already had appropriated or put aside?
So this item is actually appropriating those funds, but as you know, as a part of our budgeting process, we do cash flow forward five years. And so we've certainly expected, envisioned this element as a part of the cash flow. You may also recall that as a part of our cash flow modeling, we've been sequestering funds to help defray some of the construction cost for the police station by setting aside about $4 million a year ultimately to go towards the police station. But as we're currently envisioning by the end of this fiscal year, having, I think, $16 million sequestered, that's still not cracking the entire equation of what we're seeing is about $72 million needed for the police station. So yeah, there's more there that we're going to have to talk about.
Most certainly. And because we can maybe get different grant money because one's parking wreck and one's going to be law enforcement, so we can look at different funds, but the heart of it is to build the two concurrently, correct?
No doubt. That would be the ideal, and the economies of scale, I think, are projected into these estimates. And as it currently stands, excuse me, with the microphone, as it currently stands, as it relates to the Civic Plaza piece, we're actually in a pretty good cash position when it comes to looking at the development impact fee that's collected for parks. And so the Civic Plaza element of it, based upon our current plan for expenditures out of that fund, the Civic Plaza piece of this equation isn't my greatest concern right now. It's the police department.
Excellent. Thank you. That's all, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Potem Herriman?
Yeah. So thank you for the presentation. Everything looks really nice. Does the projected cost, I'm okay to speak directly to them?
Ask Keith.
Yeah. So the projected cost is not include any of the infrastructure construction or underground utilities or drainage or any of that?
The projected costs in our estimate include everything on-site. So the simplest way to think about it is from the curb inward, all the utilities, all the connections, all the underground stormwater within the site. It does not include anything that would need to be done in the road.
Again, thank you for the presentation. Keith, the, so the DIF fees are pretty much going to take care of things probably for the park. We've got, we've got an ample amount of DIF fees to take care of that?
Correct.
I have comments, but that's all the questions I have. Thanks.
And I just want to ask the question because I don't want to leave it out there thinking or causing a belief that we're missing something. In terms of anything in the roadway, I'm not aware of anything needed in the right-of-way in terms of additional improvement. And I'm saying that as a question as well, and so I'm looking at the team to make sure that that loop is closed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Metzler, the only improvements that would be necessary would be on Seneca, and that would be just for a small cutout for where the food trucks would potentially house. But other than that, there'd be no other improvements needed.
Can I ask one more question?
You have three minutes. Go ahead.
So the city, so the city sidewalk is included in that? Because, or are you talking about from the city easement inn? Because the curb face is not the easement.
I don't have the specific, I'd have to go back and look at our numbers and where that's drawn. Typically, we try to assume during construction, city sidewalks get broken, and so we always include estimates to come back and repair. But I would have to go back into the detail of our estimate to see what was actually where that.
This location doesn't have sidewalks, so that's beneficial. But I believe we would have to remove some for the driveway entrances, approaches, and what have you. But so the cost reflects the cost of construction to put the underground utilities in the city easement?
Yes.
It does. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Metzler, my questions have to do with changing or adding to their design? Are those the times now we ask the question or no those? Because I thought we were going to add some of our Civil Rights Memorial out there. I thought we were the old actual jail on E Street.
Well, you got to have a jail with a police bar.
Is that at this point or no that's later on, once they start, if we approve for them to move forward?
I think certainly now's a good time to ask those questions. Certainly, we use these opportunities for presentation to be able to ask all questions so that we're clear on what it is we're moving forward with. I will share that, of course, what you see here largely is predicated upon the feedback that we've gotten from the workshops and from the council as well at the updates that we've had. In terms of the Civil Rights Memorial, that is not something we've looked at as a part of this scope. That was something that was being evaluated as a different scope, a separate scope, more so related to some of the work being done in Old Town under the design contract. We were evaluating whether or not first the roundabout for 7th Street at Forest was going to physically impact the Civil Rights Memorial. I'm sorry, I'm confusing. Yeah, Civil Rights over here.
That's okay. I don't, and it can be in discussion later.
I'm sorry. I was thinking about the Veterans Memorial downtown. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So this conceptual, as staff from LPA mentioned, how there's going to be the Christmas tree ceremony, the monument for the civil rights would be near that.
Okay.
So it's envisioned, the jail was not, but the sheriff's original station next to it, as mentioned earlier, will be included in there. But we haven't had any discussions as far as moving the jail off of E Street.
All right. Thank you. Those are all the questions I have. At this time, I'll invite a motion for this item. Motion to approve staff's recommendation as presented on the agenda.
Second.
First by Mayor Becerra, second by Mayor Potem Herriman. I have no comments, just job well done to both staff and our architects. Mayor Potem Herriman?
I have none. Well, thank you, guys. Good presentation. Everything is looking like I want. I'm not the only one that gets to have what he wants, but everything looks good. I really do like those tall shades they make now out of steel. I know of another park that has that, and while they were constructing it, I was wondering what the hell it was. And so I guess that's kind of the thing nowadays. So it looks good. Thank you.
Councilwoman Godan?
Yes, thank you for the beautiful presentation. I'm excited to see this project move forward, and I'm also excited about the millions that you've saved us so far. So thank you.
Councilwoman Irvin?
Yes, I too want to say I think that this, what's proposed is very beautiful. I'm happy about the savings, but I agree with you. The logo above the community room, that's something special. So I agree. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilmember Godan?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Herriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We've now taken action to approve staff's recommendation as presented on the agenda.
Pardon me, Madam Mayor. Can we please take a 10-minute recess or 5-minute recess?
We'll take a 10 minutes.
Let's do 10 minutes. Thank you.
Yeah.[1541.11]
If we could come back to order, yeah, there we go, we're going good now. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, please. We're going to start on item 19, purchase of a John Deere backhoe and dozer through Sourcewell contract number 011723-JDC. Yep, Mr. Metzler, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the Public Works Department, Public Works and Water Department has identified some equipment needs, particularly a backhoe loader, two of them, along with, oh, God.
Dozer.
Another dozer, yeah, replacement dozer, two of them would be actual new units. And so this item has gone through our procurement process, being satisfied by a cooperative purchasing authority, Sourcewell. And so with that, this item's brought forward by your Public Works and Water Director, Mr. Doug Matthews, and he's available for any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the recommendation?
That the Honorable City Council, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, and Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve the purchase of two John Deere 410P backhoe loaders and one John Deere 650P utility dozer from RDO Equipment Company for a total not to exceed amount of $661,965.78 under Sourcewell contract number 011723-JDC, and authorize the city manager, executive director, general manager to execute any and all documents necessary for such purchases.
Thank you. At this time, we'll do technical questions from council members. Councilmember Godan?
I have none, thank you.
Councilwoman Irving?
No questions, thank you.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
I have none.
I actually do, but they're going to be weird questions. Mr. Metzler, if I may, ask Mr. Matthews?
You may ask weird questions of Mr. Matthews.
Mr. Matthews, hello, the bucket, the bucket size of the loader, of the backhoe?
Oh, I don't have that information, I had to look on the quote.
Okay, because with the 410, I didn't know if we were larger than what we used to have, or same size?
I'm fairly certain they're standard.
Standard, okay, then they're, okay, that's it, that's the weirdest question. If you need someone to drive one and help out, let me know. I'll invite a motion for this item. Motion to approve staff's recommendation as presented on the agenda.
Second.
I have no comments, but good job, thank you, the guys get to have fun. Councilwoman Irving?
No comments, thank you.
Councilwoman Godan?
None, thank you.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
I have none.
Madam Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilmember Godan?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We've now taken action to approve staff's recommendation as presented on the agenda. Item 20, amendment number three to the consult and professional service provider agreement with Civil Tech Engineering, Inc., for turnout number five, Amethyst Road Water Pipeline Metering Facility Project. Mr. Metzler, would you kindly introduce this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. This item amends an existing contract, effectively getting our design work to a finished state where we can actually have completed drawings that can ultimately be relied upon for a bid, and then ultimately award of construction contract, so that we can actually install what is ultimately going to be a 1.25-mile extension of a 24-inch pipeline connecting the existing R-cubed, MWA's R-cubed main line, and connecting that northerly towards the Sycamore and Amethyst pump station, where effectively it'll provide a second source of water at that location. And so with that, this item has been brought forward by your city engineer, Mr. Freddie Bonilla, and he's available for any questions or comments you might have.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the recommendation?
That the Honorable Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve amendment number three to the consultant professional services provider agreement with Civil Tech Engineering, Inc., increasing the total compensation by $83,225 for a revised not-to-exceed amount of $379,793.40, and authorize the extension of the agreement term through February 6, 2028, for the turnout number five, Amethyst Road Water Pipeline and Metering Facility Project, Project ESC 21-050.
Technical questions from council members, councilmember Godan?
I have none, thank you.
Councilwoman Irving?
No questions, thank you.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
I have none.
And I have none, I'll invite a motion for this item.
Move to adopt staff recommendation as presented on the agenda.
Second.
I have a first by councilwoman Godan, a second by, uh, councilmember Irving. Comments on the pending motion, councilwoman Godan?
None, thank you.
Councilwoman Irving?
Um.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
I have none.
And I have none. Madam Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilmember Godan?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We've now taken action to approve staff's recommendation as presented on the agenda. Item 21, Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant Program. Mr. Metzler, would you kindly introduce this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. Money has been made available at the state level for local agencies such as ourself to help assist in offsetting or defraying costs associated with updating certain plans. And in this particular case, this would be the second time that we're applying for this grant, we were unsuccessful the first time, but this item does authorize us to proceed with the submission of an application for the Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant. We're applying for $500,000, it does have a match requirement, and if awarded, we'll have to appropriate those match monies to actually receive the grant. But effectively, this would be a, a grant application if awarded, that would fund our, the update of our circulation element, and though our circulation element hasn't been updated since 2008, recent legislation, including AB 98, which is the warehouse bill, certainly necessitates the need to update that in the near term. And so, we're hopeful that we can not only apply, but be awarded these funds, alternatively, we'd have to look at other sources, or likely internal sources, to fund those update costs. And so with that, the author on this item is your city planner, Mr. Alex Haddig, and he's available for any questions or comments you might have.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the recommendation?
That the Honorable City Council authorize the city manager or his designee to finalize and complete the Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant Program application as presented, including the adjustment modification and/or updating of materials necessary to prepare a competitive application, and authorize the city manager or his designee to apply for and execute all documents deemed necessary to apply for funding provided by the Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant Program.
We will do technical questions from council members. Member Potem Harriman?
So, we applied for this before, and, and didn't, weren't granted a grant?
We weren't awarded, though we did reach out to the department administering the funds, once we were not awarded, and we actually solicited, solicited feedback, knowing that another round was going to come available for applications. And so we did get a lot of feedback from them as to how we could make our application better, so we're certainly more hopeful in this go-around.
Okay, so, so we are doing something a little different, maybe, to, so we can, so we can get that?
It's, it's being updated, yes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Councilwoman Irving?
Councilman Harriman asked my question, but how many times have we applied for this grant? Just once?
Just once that I'm aware of, yes.
Okay, and, and we believe that we're poised to receive funding this time.
Very hopeful.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Godan?
I have none, thank you.
And I have none, I'll invite a motion for this item.
Move to adopt staff recommendation as to points one and two is presented on the agenda.
Second.
I have a first by councilwoman Godan, a second by councilwoman Irving. Councilwoman Godan, comments on the pending motion?
No, just also hoping and praying we get this.
Councilwoman Irving?
I have my fingers crossed, Mr. Metzler, thank you.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
I have none.
And I have none. Madam Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilmember Godan?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We've now taken action to approve staff's recommendation as presented on the agenda. Item 22, memorandum of understanding, the Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority, VVWR, the City of Asperia, and the City of Victorville. Mr. Metzler, would you kindly introduce this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. As, as you're aware, we, as the City of Victorville, are a member of the Joint Powers Authority, commonly referred to by acronym as VVWR, the Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority. And as a member of the VVWR JPA, we're also party to a service agreement, which effectively stipulates the, the provisions of wastewater treatment services for its members. And, and with that, we've relied on VVWR largely to serve in a treatment capacity for a portion, a large portion of the wastewater collected by our collection system. As you also know, we have our own wastewater treatment plant that does treat a, a small part of the aggregated flows, largely flows coming from the west and southwest part of Victorville. And with that, you'll probably also recall that back in 2016, we did give notice of intent, I'm sorry, we did give notice to VVWR of its desire to withdraw from that organization, the provisions of the service agreement did require a 30-year notice, and so since 2016, the clock has been ticking. Your staff, in preparation of that 30-year, ultimately coming to term, has, has been exploring alternatives and options as to what to do, and how we intend to handle our treatment, the larger treatment, if in fact, we're no longer going to rely on VVWR. That notwithstanding, we've been working with VVWR for at least a year now, a little over a year now, exploring opportunities to where we can continue on with them as, as an organization, and us as a member of the organization. And so, this is an item that we have discussed at length with you in closed session meetings. And working with VVWR, along with the City of Asperia, we've made pretty good progress, at least in establishing a framework, which effectively is a pathway to ultimately getting us to withdraw our notice of, the notice of termination, but then also working towards a new JPA, because there certainly is a belief based upon issues that, you know, existed and led up to the termination, issues that need to be addressed and resolved if we're going to continue to rely on the VVWR JPA as an organization going forward. And so with that, this is a framework that has been approved at the VVWR board, it was approved at the last meeting, and being that it's something that I, along with the city manager from Asperia, have worked on, it's certainly something I, as your manager, am bringing forward with the recommendation that we enter in this MOU. In doing so, it'll definitely require a dedication of staff time to continue to work closely with VVWR, ultimately to establish a new JPA, and get us to that place where we can withdraw our notice of termination. And so with that, this item is my item, I did author the item, and so I'm available for any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, would you please read the recommendation?
Any action is at the discretion of the Honorable City Council.
At this time, we'll do technical questions from council members. Councilmember Godan?
I have no questions, as I have followed this item very closely, but I will have comments.
Thank you. Councilwoman Irving?
I don't really have any question, well, any technical questions, but this is your item, right, Mr. Metzler, and I trust that you're very satisfied with the outcome.
I am, I, I did take a, a lead role in, in drafting certainly the provisions that are important to Victorville, and I do believe this, if we can accomplish it all, this is a very fair and appropriate deal for us to, to get back in to the relationship with VVWR long-term.
Very good, thank you.
Mayor Potem Harriman? Mayor Potem Harriman?
I don't have any questions, thank.
And I have none. I'll invite a motion for this item.
Move to adopt staff recommendation as presented on the agenda.
Second.
I'm sorry, it's, any action is at the discretion of your Honorable City Council, so can I have a motion, please?
Oh, I did do that, huh? I'll invite a motion for this item?
No, you did. And they made a motion to adopt staff recommendation, so I need the, I need an actual motion.
Okay. Go ahead.
I move that we adopt this item as presented.
Yes.
Second.
Worded out. Okay. I have a first by councilwoman Godan, a second by mayor Potem Harriman. Councilwoman Godan, comments on the pending motion?
I'm very excited about this item. It has been a lot of work in the making, a lot of time in the making. I want to thank Mr. Metzler, and, you know, obviously, the city manager of Asperia was heavily involved as well. Both of you put a lot of time and hours into this. This is a huge win, not just for the City of Victorville, but also for the communities that are a part of this JPA. This is a win for the, just the high desert region in general, being able to have our resources together. And I look forward to continuing to move forward as we rewrite this MOU and come to an agreement and a new JPA. Again, I just feel like this is a huge win for the City of Victorville.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Harriman?
Yeah, I would just like to say to our city manager, I truly respect his standing firm, and he's quite the negotiator. So I'm really happy with this, and I'm really confident that, that it was, that we got what we deserved.
Councilwoman Irving?
Yes, then we comment. Mr. Metzler, I want to thank you for your leadership in coming to a resolution in this matter. And I think it's going to benefit indeed Victorville, but, but the other municipalities and jurisdictions involved. So thank you so much for your leadership and your tenacity and all that good stuff to my illustrious city manager.
Yeah, what she said. Madam Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilmember Godan?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We've now taken action to approve Mr. Metzler's recommendation as presented on the agenda. Item twenty-three, Building six ninety-four demolition, standard construction agreement, project CC two-six dash zero-four-seven. Mr. Metzler, would you kindly introduce this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. As a product of SCLA getting to the point where, with respect to the facilities it operates, owns, operates, and leases, and it being largely full with all of the leasable facilities, we're certainly exploring opportunities all the time to identify new lease revenue opportunities. And so with that, you've seen recently proposals and awards of contracts also to demolish facilities, and that's in part to clear some properties that don't have reusable value, given the old dilapidated buildings that exist. And so effectively, we've been looking at ways to basically clear properties and make way for new development opportunities, which ultimately we're expecting to yield new revenues, additional revenues to the airport operation. And so this is one of those items. This building, six ninety-four, happens to be fairly close to the building that's been the subject of the last bidding that is under active demolition currently, and, and close enough to where there's certainly a vision that, once demolished, we'll have a clear enough site where we can actually basically merge the two locations as one and, and start the conceptual design for a development that may be long and rectangular to basically fit the dimensions of the property. And so with that, is this, is an opportunity cost, as we would characterize it, to ultimately get to new revenue? This item's been brought forward after having completed the bid process, where we actually created the scope of work, had the job walk, and effectively invited bids. And with that, you have a recommendation that includes awarding to the low bidder. This item has been authored by your airport director, Mr. James Morosky, and he's available for any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the recommendation?
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve the award of a standard construction agreement with ADM Improvements, Inc. for Building six ninety-four demolition, project CC twenty-six dash zero-four-seven, with the total compensation not to exceed two-hundred-forty-thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars.
Thank you. We'll do technical questions from council member. Councilmember Godan?
Mr. Metzler, did you say that this building was on airport?
It is on airport. It's not inside the fence line, but it's on a property defined as airport property.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Councilwoman Irving? Mayor Potem Harriman?
Yeah, so, did the contractor that's doing the existing demolition on the other building, did they, did they bid on this?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, yes, they did bid on the project, but they were well above the lowest bid that we received that we're going to award the contract.
Do, just, just for my mind, do you, can you recall what their price came in at?
So theirs was at three-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, so a little over a hundred thousand more than what?
Okay, I, it's right in front of me. I apologize. That's, that's weird to me. I, you would have think, you would have thought, since they're already there with their equipment, that, you know, okay. Anyways, that's all I have. Thanks.
Goodness. And I have done, I'll invite a motion for this item. Motion to approve staff's recommendation as presented on the agenda.
Second.
Second.
First by Mayor Becerra, second by Councilwoman Irving. I have no comments. Councilwoman Irving?
Comments, thank you.
Councilwoman Godan?
None, thank you.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
I have none.
Madam Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Godan?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We've now taken action to approve staff's recommendation as presented on the agenda. Item twenty-four. Runway seventeen dash three-five Reconstruction Bidding Support Construction Management and Inspection Services, project CC two-one dash zero-one-five. Mr. Metzler, would you kindly introduce this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. As you may recall, on October seventh of this year, we did, acting as the Airport Authority Board of Directors, approve the award of construction for what we're characterizing, or what we're calling Phase Six of the runway one-seven-three-five reconstruction. And so with that, as that award is in place and construction is expected to start here fairly soon, this contract before you actually brings back the original designer to also serve as the CM and provide the inspection services to make sure that the, the project actually is constructed in accord with, with how the plans and specs for this project was designed. And so with that, this item does bring back an award to Burns and Mack. The author on this item is your airport director, Mr. James Morosky, and he's available for any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the recommendation?
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve amendment four to the Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement to Burns and McDonald Engineering Company, Inc. for bidding support, construction management, inspection services, project CC twenty-one dash zero-one-five, increasing the total not-to-exceed compensation by six-hundred-six-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and fifteen cents to one-million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and fifty cents, and extending the term of the agreement to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
At this time, we'll do technical questions from council members. Councilwoman Godan?
I have none, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Irving?
I don't, I don't, I, I don't, well, yes, I do, I do have a question. So Burns and McDonald, they're going to oversee this? They're going to serve as like the project manager?
Yes.
And how does Kaufman Specialties, how do they work into this?
So Kaufman is the actual construction company, so they're doing the physical building. And so Burns and Mack, being the designer on it, they're actually going to be overseeing, they're going to be the ones that are responsible for resolving any conflicts between contractor and designer to, to make sure we're represented properly to, really as an opportunity to really control the cost and make sure we're not assessed unnecessary change orders on the project.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Mayor Potem Harriman?
Yeah, so this, this actually doesn't change the scope of the work at all?
No.
And does this allow, we don't have to have our inspectors then on the job site? This guy's going to do it? For lack of a, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm so loose with my words.
If I might, I guess the technical is whether or not there's city inspectors. These, these, these folks are largely focused on the, the, the quality and the assurance of the actual construction work, but in terms of involving city inspectors, can you answer that?
I can answer that question, yes. So these inspectors will be inspecting the quality according to FAA regulations and for the design standards for that. So the city inspectors won't be involved for the pavement, as is with the FAR regulations that comply with it.
So we, we still have our inspectors on-site?
We can have them on-site, especially for anything that can do with, you know, for drainage or anything utility-wise. But for this, for being the pavement, the construction, the concrete, this is with the Burns and McDonald team.
Okay.
Design, and also just the management of the project.
Okay, yeah, that's what I said. The item's not for change of scope?
No.
Okay, okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I'll invite a motion for this item.
I move that the Victorville City Council, sitting as the SLA Board of Directors, adopt staff recommendation as presented on the agenda.
Second.
I have a first by councilwoman Godan, a second by mayor Potem Harriman. Councilwoman Godan, comments on the pending motion?
No comments.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
I have none.
Councilwoman Irving?
No comments, thank you.
And I have none. Madam Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilmember Godan?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We've now taken action to approve staff's recommendation as presented on the agenda. Item twenty-five. We're going to take this at a slower pace, folks. We're going to break it up into sections. So let's start with discussion and possible action to consider options available relative to the resignation of councilmember Jones and the filling of the vacancy created by this resignation, to include details on how to accomplish each option available. Mr. Metzler, would you kindly introduce this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council, resulting from a prior action of the council. This item has been brought forward. It is a staff report that at least identifies government code requirements relative to your options for replacing the existing vacancy. Your options, of course, are special election or appointment. You also have guidance offered in your policy and procedure manual. If the council were to choose appointment, there's certainly guidance in the policy and procedure manual as to how you should consider proceeding with an appointment process. And then finally, it also does provide guidance as to how to handle an ad hoc committee, presuming, of course, you choose as a council to consider an ad hoc committee to do the evaluation, the review of applications, and ultimately making a recommendation to this council. That would be an alternative to actually conducting all the interviews here in the chambers in public. It's entirely within your discretion, considering all the information in the staff report. Staff's available for any additional questions or comments you might have.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, would you please read the recommendation?
Any action is at the discretion of the City Council.
Okay. At this time, we are going to do technical questions to council members. Let's go ahead and start with councilmember Irving.
I don't have any technical questions.
Councilwoman Godan?
I have no questions.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
I have no questions.
And I have none. Okay, as the mayor, I'd like to bifurcate this item into easy, manageable chunks. We will first take action to determine if we call for a special election or we fill the vacancy by appointment. Do I have a motion for this action?
I move that we make an appointment.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. I have a first by councilwoman Godan, a second by mayor Potem Harriman. Councilwoman Godan, comments on the pending motion?
No comments.
Mayor Potem Harriman? Comments on the pending motion?
I have none.
Councilwoman Irving?
No.
And I have none. Madam Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilmember Godan?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We've now taken action to fill the vacancy by appointment. Now we will move on to determine if we conduct interviews in open session or if we form an ad hoc committee consisting of two council members. Do I have a motion for this item?
Move, move to create an ad hoc committee with two council members.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, while I, I don't have a problem with the ad hoc committee, it depends on how many applicants that we have.
That I agree with you.
Yes.
So.
So I, I offer a substitute motion. I move that the council request that staff solicit applications from prospective appointees.
Okay, and then from?
To replace councilmember.
Okay.
Former councilmember Jones.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
I think we need to also clarify that a little bit. So are you meaning to solicit applications? And if we receive under a certain amount, then you want to do in-person interviews? Or if we receive over a certain amount, then ad hoc committee?
Let me, let me clarify that. I move that this council requests that staff solicit applications from prospective appointees to replace council, former councilmember Jones. And if we solicit five or less, that we have open interviews.
Does that work for you?
Yes.
Okay.
First, is there a second on that motion? Go ahead. I heard you say, go ahead.
I have a substitute motion.
Hold on, one, two.
We could do one more.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to direct the city manager to arrange for the online posting of the District Two council vacancy. Direct the city clerk to accept letters of interest from District Two residents who are registered voters submitted by five PM on Friday, November fourteenth, and to release all letters from eligible candidates to the council Tuesday, November eighteenth. Set a special meeting for November eighteenth, prior to the regular meeting, for the ad hoc committee to present its recommendations and for the council to make decisions on them. Direct the city manager to arrange for letters to be sent to eligible candidates before noon on November nineteenth, confirming their upcoming interview with the city council. The letter should be on behalf of the city council, signed by the mayor. And set a special meeting to conduct formal interviews and to deliberate and appoint a new councilman or council member in accordance with the Brown Act and council policy. Sorry, that's so long.
I'm going to go with a second on the first one, of forming an ad hoc committee.
Okay, so do we have a second on Bob's very lengthy motion that I didn't get all of?
No second.
Okay. So then we go back to the motion by Leslie, which is solicit applications for appointees, and if five or less, do open interviews?
No second.
So do we have a second on that one? No second? So we're back to the main motion?
So getting a committee going. That's all we're voting on?
The main motion was for an ad hoc committee consisting of two council members to be formed. So Bob, for a lack of a second, his motion died. Leslie, for a lack of a section, second, her motion died. But the main motion that has a first and a second.
Okay. Comments on the pending motion? Councilwoman Godan?
I have no comments.
The comments I have, all we're doing right now is forming a committee. We're going to still move on to what we vote on. Councilwoman Irving? Comments on the pending motion? Ad hoc committee.
Once we determine whether or not we're going to form a committee, is there a process in place on how you determine who will sit on the committee?
Yep, there is. We're going to move along.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mayor Potem Harriman?
Uh, I, my comments were just, I was trying to put everything together. If we're going to just vote, if we're just going to take a vote to, to appoint ad hoc committee, then so be it.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Godan?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
No.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
Yes.
Motion passes with Councilmember Irving voting no.
Okay, we've now taken action to form an ad hoc committee. Now, we move on to determine if the ad hoc committee will develop the process for appointment and will the ad hoc committee review the application and make recommendations to the Do I have a motion for this item?
I move that the ad hoc committee make recommendations, uh, for the appointment to the council and that the ad hoc committee also determine the process in which the selection shall be made.
I'll second that one. Comments on the pending motion, Councilwoman Irving?
No comments.
I have none. Councilwoman Godan?
I have none.
Mayor Protem Harriman?
I have none.
Madam Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilmember Godan?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We've now taken action to determine what the ad hoc committee will do with the...
That the ad hoc committee will review applications and make a recommendation to the city council about the process of appointment.
There you go. Next, now we move on to determine which members of the city council will participate on the ad hoc committee. This is gonna be fun.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Do I have a motion for this item? No.
You need a motion?
Yeah, well, you have to say what, who you want.
Oh, I nominate myself to sit on the committee.
Okay, I have one. As the mayor, I'm gonna take the first seat. I have that option, correct?
You, you have the option to appoint to the ad hoc committee or you can allow the council as a whole to do so?
Okay, let's allow the action. I also put my name into the basket?
I also nominate myself.
Okay, anybody else?
I also nominate myself.
Let's go. Um, clerk, now what do we do?
So you've each made a nomination for yourselves, um, and I would assume that each one of you, um, would have a second, um, for yourself, so, um, we can start by, um...
Letter finish.
Can I do a substitute motion?
You can.
I, uh, my substitute motion is to have the mayor and Mayor Protem on the ad hoc committee.
Is there a second to that?
I'll go with a second, but it's gonna be a two-two vote, so I'll go with a second on that one.
Any further motions? Okay, so we'll, uh, we'll vote on the mayor and Mayor Protem. Councilmember Godan?
No.
Councilmember Irving?
No.
Mayor Protem Harriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
Yes.
Tie vote, motion fails.
Okay.
So we could, um, probably do this as we would do a nomination for mayor and Mayor Protem. Um, so we have a nomination for each councilmember, and what we could do is go down and have each councilmember, um, identify the two individuals that they would wish to be on the committee. And, um, whoever receives the majority vote from each one then would be, um, selected to the ma- the committee. So we could start with, uh, Councilmember Irving, um, and go down the aisle to see who would want her on the committee and do that for each individual member. Does that work for you guys?
Works for me.
Okay. So we had a nomination for Councilmember Irving, um, Councilmember Bec- or Mayor Becerra, Member Godan, and Bob Harriman. So I'm gonna start with Councilmember Godan for her to, uh, provide the names of the individuals that were nominated, um, for the ad hoc committee.
Excuse, excuse me, uh, Madam City Clerk, are we gonna just vote on each person yes or no, or how are we doing this?
We can vote on each person yes or no, or the member can indicate which two individuals they would be supporting for that nomination. Or the mayor can exert her right. She can exert her right to indicate who she wishes to be on the ad hoc committee pursuant to the council policy and procedure manual.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Let's do that. Let's move on. Let's direct staff to submit app- solicit applications from residents of District Two to fill the vacancy, keeping in mind this vacancy must fill by December twentieth. When the city clerk has the applications, then we will make a, if we get one, okay, there's, we're sitting here arguing for no reason. If we get two to five, we can go from there. Uh, you know, let's figure out how many we get first before we cut each other at the knees, so, yeah. So let's just, let's move on to direct staff to solic- solicit applications from District Two. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Comments on the pending motion? I have none. Councilwoman Irving?
I don't have any comments, but I do wanna clarify. So we're, we're going to, we're not going to appoint anyone to the ad hoc committee at this time. We're gonna wait and see.
How many applications?
Very well, yes, ma'am, I'm on board.
Okay, but, go ahead.
I understand that, does...
Madam Clerk, if I may, so, we already do have an agreement, though, to have an ad hoc committee. You're just gonna postpone, do anything with that ad hoc committee until you get applications, is that right?
And I'm going to exert my, as mayor, to who sits on it. Once we figure out how many we get, we get two, we can bring them in front of the council. We get five, then we can bring in the committee. Does that work?
Right. All I'm trying to clarify is you already have a motion approved to have an ad hoc committee.
That was what I was gonna state here in a second.
Okay.
Yeah, so you already have the thing to co- to do the ad hoc committee?
Good.
But you're exerting your right to appoint?
After we get...
After you get the applications?
Yes, ma'am.
Following the council policy and procedure manual?
Yes, ma'am.
So now you're gonna go ahead and take action to move to direct staff to solicit?
Yes, ma'am, but we're still at the comments of the pending motion, and we were with Councilwoman Godan.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do we have to appoint that, make that appointment at an open meeting?
Yes. The, the appointment of the ad hoc members?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, can we take a look at that again based upon the policy and procedure manual? Um, because I believe the policy and procedure manual has two, two options for the council to decide, which it can't decide tonight, or unilateral authority to the mayor.
Keith, you are right, uh, per the ad hoc, per sec- chapter nine, section two, section B two, the mayor has the discretion to make appointments to such ad hoc subcommittees or allow a majority of the council to vote on such appointments. So yes, the mayor would have the ability to designate who's gonna be on that ad hoc committee outside of a public meeting.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, so even though we have a motion, we've taken action to appoint someone to, I mean, appoint, uh, councilmembers to an ad hoc committee, the mayor can unilaterally decide that she would like to exercise her right, per the policy manual, to just do away with that and, and allow the council to either vote or go ahead and make the appointment to the ad hoc committee. Is that correct?
So, as I understand, as I understand, the motion to date is just to form an ad hoc committee. Nobody has decided on who would be on that committee at this point, but per the policy manual, the mayor has the discretion to appoint members to that policy, to that ad hoc committee.
No, but I'm also saying she also has a discretion to supersede the ad hoc committee, forego making an appointment, and then make a determination that she wants to open, depending on how many applicants we get, she may open up, uh, the process to the entire council. That's what I heard. Is that incorrect or correct?
I think technically that's not correct. I think technically what's going on here is you have a, already have a approved motion to establish an ad hoc committee. What I'm hearing the mayor say is that she does not wanna fill those positions at this point. She wants staff to solicit interest, and then it, I believe she's gonna exercise her right at that point to then...
Correct.
...be on that ad hoc committee.
Well, let's suppose she only has, we, we only have two or three applicants.
Right.
She'll br- she has the right to bring them to council and decide, you know what? I'm not appointing anyone to the ad hoc committee, we don't need one. Is that correct?
I think that...
That is correct, right, per the policy manual? There are two options that she can exercise her unilateral authority, am I right?
She, she has the unilateral authority to appoint members to the ad hoc committee. That's correct.
But I think what you're getting at is that what the, um, motion was, was to form the ad hoc, ad hoc committee to review the applications and make a recommendation back to the city council. That recommendation could at that point in time be, we didn't receive enough applicants, let's do the interviews in the public view, versus if we received a bunch of applications, then they could review those applications in an ad hoc setting and bring forward recommendations to the city council.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you. Could you go?
Okay.
Councilwoman Godan, you were last, are you the comment?
I have no comments, thank you.
Mayor Protem Harriman?
I have none.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilmember Godan?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
You're gonna get mad at me, put the brakes on. How, how long we leaving these applications open? That needs to be a new, a new thing?
Um, well, I thought we were still on the third motion?
Yes, we are.
Uh, my, yeah, the fourth motion, sorry. So we hadn't gone to the directing staff to the solicit and then, um, giving specific dates. That was kind of part, part of Bob's big motion.
Okay, but that didn't get voted, so we say yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Now, we're directing staff to solicit applications opening tomorrow?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, Madam City Clerk, what did we just take action on? Cause I thought it was, we were, I thought we were directing staff to solicit applications.
We are, but we didn't give them timeline.
Um, let's see, I thought we were talking about the, what the mayor has the ability to do, so that she has the ability to actually appoint to that ad hoc committee, and that we kind of got into questions on that, cause there was...
But we just took action to do what?
Um, it's my understanding we took, um, action to, um... Hang on.
Direct staff, because that's what I seconded. Solicited applications, but we didn't give a date?
Jennifer, I believe that's correct. It was to basically ha- direct staff to solicit.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
We need to now give a date? An opening and closing date? We didn't do that.
It, we can make a new motion for dates if you'd like. I think there's some calendars in front of, of the mayor.
That's right, that's why I was looking at them.
Okay.
So...
And if...
Go ahead, sir.
If I might, I mean, we've got the direction, the direction is clear, so we'll obviously solicit. I don't necessarily know that I need, um, an actual, uh, action from you. Guidance is sufficient, uh, if, if we wanna go through and develop a schedule, we'll work with the schedule.
Cool.
Uh, so if you wanted, just give us some guidance on, um, how you, when you'd like this all accomplished, we can work with that, to, to avoid having to take another vote.
Thank you. Seven days, seven working days, does that work for the RO, the ROV? To confirm?
Um, so we could solicit applications in a seven-day period and then come back after that, but it would have to, action has to be taken by December twentieth, and then we would have to, could also with the applications confirmed with the ROV that they're registered to vote in the jurisdiction, um, in District Two.
Yeah, so that could, we could bring it back on the eighteenth. If it goes out tomorrow?
Yeah.
We can come back the eighteenth. Correct?
Yeah.
Sir?
A special meeting?
No, the eighteenth is a council meeting. It's the day before we leave.
You can have a special meeting prior to the council meeting.
So I'm looking at your...
Special meeting.
I'm, I'm, I'm being serious here, um, I'm look, I'm getting hung up on a word that's in your policy manual when it speaks to council vacancies, and so, language from your policy and procedure manual says the city shall initiate an application and interview process which shall be robust, and it's that term robust, I don't know exactly what's intended, um, uh, when, when the council approved it, but I guess I'm throwing that out there just to, to, to make sure that as we're deliberating and, and seeking guidance on the element of time in terms of how long we wanna cast this net, you know, is that, is that robust? Is that sufficient, um, to do everything possible to get as much, um, interest as necessary?
Are we looking for a term for robust? How are you ready for the city council?
Again, I would, I would agree with Mr. Menzel. I mean, it's up to interpretation, but I think what you do want is you wanna have some, some dates that can work to solicit applications, to review the applications, and then come back to the council, and I guess, Keith, is that viable by the next meeting in November? Or would we go to the first meeting in December? I think it'd certainly be robust doing it by the first, by the next meeting in November.
And that would be, so I'm just gonna talk this out loud, so that would be to post, make a posting, create an awareness tomorrow, starting tomorrow, that there's a vacancy available on District Two, submit letters of interest, applications, resumes, whatever, uh, to the city clerk, um, just looking at the calendar. Yeah, we can make that work, so I mean, if we started tomorrow, we don't necessarily, um, you know, we, we post the agenda for the eighteenth on the thirteenth, that's kinda tight, but we likely could have a generic staff item, not identifying a name, but at least, you know, give, being enough so that the council can take action, um, and perhaps close it by the fourteenth, you know, if we wanted to approach it that way, close it by the fourteenth, certainly gives you the weekend and Monday, the seventeenth, to, 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 to review and consider, and then have a recommendation by the eighteenth, that could be done.
Your, your other option would also then to, before the eighteenth, you could call a special meeting like an hour before the regular meeting to go over applications if you wanted a little more time, Keith.
Madam Mayor? May I ask, I, I wanna point a clarification here. Are we suggesting that we're going to make an appointment on the eighteenth? Because I'm thinking that we're gonna close applications on the fourteenth and bring them back to the, is it the fourteenth or?
Fourteenth is a Friday, and, and that, that might be a good date to close.
Okay, and that would give us an additional, that will give us a week to review, correct?
It'd give you a few days, because you've gotta, well, presuming you wanna, you wanna move quickly, it would give you a few days for at least the mayor to consider whether or not she wanted to appoint based upon the response.
All right, and we would do that on the eighteenth, correct?
Um, which one, the ad hoc or the appointment?
The ad hoc.
Um, I guess it kinda depends on the result of the, of the process. I mean, if you only get one, do you necessarily wanna wait any longer? Do you wanna just bring that forward to the council, say, on the eighteenth?
But what, what I'm saying is we'll make a determination on wh- what pathway we will, uh, explore, whether we're gonna appoint an ad hoc committee and/or entertain an appointment or, or decide that we don't have enough applications and therefore we make the recommendation that we appoint on the eighteenth. I'm just trying to understand that. I, I think that's, whatever robust, robust means, I don't think that's robust to make an appointment unless we only have one application on the eighteenth.
And additionally, it's gonna take time for us to vet those through the ROV. It's not like we can get a response from them in a day on the applicants, so we have to get the ROV, the information, they'll confirm with us, so it, I don't necessarily know if we closed the applications on the fourteenth, that we could have that vetting done and so forth in the, the timeframe that's allotted right here.
Put it on the council agenda for the second, for a vote. Cause once, if we close it on the fourteenth, I'll make the decision that afternoon of how many, tell me we got. And then I'll get ahold of that other council member, and we'll meet anytime that next week. You don't have to appoint in the...
Yeah, can, yeah, the appointment for the ad hoc has to be done in open session, correct?
No, it does not.
Oh, okay.
So guess what?
It, it, the, the mayor has the ability to do it, does not have to actually be done. I was, I misspoke previously.
Okay, thank you for correcting that, Andre.
So, okay. Did that bring it back on December second for appointment? Is that a motion?
So is your motion to, um, have staff open, um, the vacancy, seeking some applications tomorrow, close on the fourteenth, then vet, and ad hoc committee, so forth, and then back to council on December second?
Yes.
For appointment?
For appointment.
Okay, so that's your motion.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
There we go. Comments on the pending motion? I have none. Councilwoman Godan?
I have none.
Councilwoman Irving?
No comments. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Herriman?
I have none.
Madam Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilmember Godan?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We got through that one. Item twenty-five, city manager report. Yes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Uh, we do have a few, uh, events coming up. On the Animal Services side of the House, we do have a low-cost pet vaccination clinic this Saturday, November eighth, from ten AM to one PM, and that's at the Animal Care and Adoption Center. Certainly a great, uh, way and opportunity to keep your pets healthy and meet some adorable pets available for adoption, for free adoption, I should say. Uh, and so for more information on that, uh, we, we have that available through Animal Services. On the Environmental Programs side of the House, uh, one of my favorite days of the year is the Free Dump Day for Victorville residents. That's this Saturday, November eighth, uh, from, uh, eight AM to, to one PM at the university prep, former university prep site on Forest and Eighth Street. Victorville residents are encouraged to take advantage of this, uh, day to dispose of extra trash, including mattresses, old furniture, yard trimmings. For more information, we have that on the website. Uh, we're also proud and pleased to announce that, um, uh, this division, the Environmental Programs Division, has successfully recycled nearly eleven thousand used tires over the past three years with the support of the Cal Recycle Grant Funding. Uh, those grants, those grants, um, also helped the city purchase essential supplies for field crew, enabling us to keep, uh, Victorville clean and safe. On the Public Information side of the House, uh, we do have, uh, coming up, the twenty-ninth Annual Veterans Day Parade in celebration in Old Town on November eleventh. Uh, join us for the festivities at the intersection of Seventh, uh, and Forest, uh, beginning at nine AM. Um, and check out our new float. We'll, uh, give you a sneak peek of that. Uh, we also have some, uh, development updates that I'll include as a part of the traditional forwarding of this, uh, email to you, and you can track your, uh, track all of the projects that are going through the development process with us. Uh, that's all I have at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Metzler. We're going to move on to item twenty-seven, discussion and possible action regarding upcoming agenda items. Member Godan?
I have none.
Member Irving?
I don't have any. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Herriman?
I don't have any.
And I have two. Of course I do. My first one, I would like to add an item for discussion and possible action at the next city council meeting to appoint a representative, appoint a representative to the vacant planning commission seat. Second. Okay. Madam Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Godan?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herriman?
Yes.
Mayor Becerra?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The second one is, I would like to add an item for discussion and possible action at the soonest city council meeting recommended by staff to discuss the possibility of a general transaction and use tax measure to support infrastructure and other general municipal services.
Second.
Got that? You, you are...
Well, I heard Tiffany, cause she's closest to me, so I'm not sure what you heard.
It's okay. Will you take the vote, please?
Sure. Councilmember Godan?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herriman?
Could, could, could you explain that a little better to me?
So the staff has to start looking at a general tax use of what they need, what our needs and assessments are for the, everything we have, infrastructure, the new police station, uh, different parks, things like that. With the money we have, we've already been told three years now that I've been on council, we are going to run out of money for our road projects.
Let's not discuss, discuss this too much because we can end up in a brownback violation.
I think so.
So he doesn't understand?